Good morning, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Glidden, and I am the Chair of our Committee of the Whole, and I am going to call to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the committee. I am joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, Goodman, Frye, Paul Misano, and Councilmember Bender is here and will be returning shortly, I do believe. We are a quorum of a committee and able to do business today. We have one item formally on our agenda, and then we will have, I will add, a second item, which is really part of a committee report from CD and RS, is an update on an item that was on the agenda of that committee. So first, we will turn to our One Agenda item, and I'm not sure if Ms. Traver or Ms. Christensen is presenting, but come on up. This is a change to our ordinance that directs our relationship with the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority, and we have proposed change that aligns with some legal requirements. Ms. Christensen, why don't you give us an overview, please?
Thank you, Chair Glidden, and members of the committee. And before you today to present the recommendation to propose an amendment to Title 16, Chapter 420 of the city's ordinance, apparently my name comes first in the alphabet, so I'm standing before you as opposed to my colleagues here. What we have brought before you today is a proposal to amend the city's ordinance, Chapter 420, pertaining to planning and development, specifically our relationship with the Public Housing Authority. And I have prepared a slide to kind of walk through some of the reasoning behind our proposal to bring this before you today. First of all, what exactly is the Title 16, Chapter 420? It is a provision within the city's ordinances that pertains to continued relationships between the Minneapolis Public Housing Authority and the city when the NPHA became a separate entity a number of years ago. The current ordinance outlines a number of potential shared support activities. What are we proposing to change? We're proposing to eliminate references to non-existent relationships and support activities that the city does not provide to the NPHA. We are also changing the definition of the authorities of the NPHA following separation that doesn't, they do not necessarily belong within the city's ordinances. And the changes also outline remaining relationships for the administration of housing unit rehabilitation, a cooperative effort between the city and NPHA. Why are we doing this now, or why are we recommending this change at this time? It coincides with the ongoing transition of the Minneapolis Public Housing Agency to its separate benefit plans and payroll administration, so it would be more reflective of the ongoing relationship that we have for administrative services. And again, it recognizes the current reality of our relationship and further clarifies the extent of the continuing obligations between the two agencies.
All right. Thank you very much. I will let my colleagues know that I do have Speaker Management up. I am not seeing any clarifying questions from councilmembers, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing. And I will ask if there is anyone here who would like to speak at the public hearing. We conduct a, typically conduct a public hearing on any ordinance changes, so just for folks to know, this is a usual part of our process. And I'm not seeing anyone come forward, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I will move approval of these amendments to the ordinance that is before us with maybe just one final comment, which is that as the request for council action states towards the end, some of these changes are also to ensure that the city's benefit plans are legally compliant with some state and federal requirements that talk about separation of benefits provided. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and that item is approved. Thank you very much to staff. Next, we have our, an update provided, and I'll maybe turn to Councilmember Goodman, if you wanted to lead any of the conversation, or should I just, I think Mr. Mercer is prepared to give us an overview of the issues.
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering if I could just briefly mention the 11 other items on the agenda, and then...
Sure, however you would like to do that. So why don't you go ahead and do that, and then we'll take the update from staff.
Okay. So we have a number of items on the agenda tomorrow, many of them very notable, and that's why I want to make sure they come out first, including item number two, which is a change that's been in the works for a very long period of time authored by Councilmembers Paul Misano, Glidden, and Frye, which would make changes to the food and alcohol sales ratio ordinance amendments. This is allowing us to have a new way of dealing with liquor and restaurant establishments and how we judge their behavior in neighborhoods. Essentially, we would be eliminating the 60-40 requirements and putting in new requirements that might better be able to judge whether or not businesses are operating appropriately outside of downtown. So that's item number two. Item three is a rental dwelling license revocation. Item four are all of the rest of the liquor, beer, wine, and gambling license applications. Item six is an operating conditions for the CC Club. Five, six is business license operating conditions for Mecanos Coffee and Grill. Seven are business licensing operating conditions for grocery and tobacco license. Eight are rental dwelling license issues. Nine are the, is the reconvenance and quitclaim deed execution at 4831 Colfax Avenue North. Item number 10 is the Met Council's housing policy plan. We discussed that this morning in the adjourned meeting. Item 11 is up in two other committees as well. This is passing ordinances relating to restroom and toilet facilities. And item number 12 is moving forward the 2015 license fee schedule with no increase proposed for 2015. This is also in two other committees noting that there will be a wholesale revision to our license structure happening internally over the next year with an anticipation that after three years of no increases, we're going to see a potentially different system, more matched with the services that are being rendered for the license that's being requested. So I will happily answer questions on items two through 12, including a number of very notable items I just want to point out.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate that you took the opportunity to let us know those items before we got into this discussion about the downtown east development. Council President Johnson, did you have a question on one of those items?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to reiterate a phone call that I made yesterday to Ms. Monson about the remarks that our staff, staff prepared for the response to the Met Council's housing policy plan, and I just thought they were spot on and just very, what's the word I want to say, deliberate, you know, about what the challenges are in some of our neighborhoods. And she said Mr. Schaefer, Brian Schaefer, was the one that did the work, so I want to thank him for that because they were just great.
And Council President Johnson, a number of people who weren't on the committee were here this morning to hear this report as well, and we also, Councilmember Quincy in particular has been following this, thought that his comments were very good and very representative of the majority opinion, which is almost a unanimous opinion of people on the city council. Other questions? Okay, with that, then I will defer to Councilmember Frye to talk about item number one.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman and Chair Glidden. I'm assuming at this point, we're going to open it up to staff, and I believe Mr. Mercer here is, is here to talk about the developments of Block 1.
May I have the clerk pass out that term sheet? Great. Good morning, Madam Chair, councilmembers. My name is Miles Mercer. I'm in the Business Development Group at CPED. I've been the project coordinator and part of the staff team that has been working on the downtown east project. And what we're here to talk with you about today is one part of that downtown east project. It's related to the Block 1 development rights. Now, what happened last week in committee was we brought forward a term sheet for the, for the development of those Block, Block 1 development rights, a term sheet with Ryan Companies, and the committee voted to advance the item without recommendation. And so since that time, we've been working with Ryan Companies to, on the term sheet, and we've actually improved the term sheet. And so what we want to do today is just briefly discuss the term sheet generally, but with a focus on what has changed in the deal and how the deal has gotten better. And I just want to acknowledge that we have some representatives from Ryan Companies here, as well as other members of the staff team in the room for any questions that come up. So the first thing I'd like to do is just, because I think it's always helpful to just know where we're talking about, I just want to show this map briefly. This is a map of East Downtown. You can see the old Metrodome there. So there's several blocks that are numbered there. The block that we are talking about is the one labeled Block 1. Just to the south of that is the Light Rail Station, and the blocks labeled 2 and 3 are currently under construction, and that's where the new Wells Fargo office towers will go. So on Block 1, there is going to be a new parking ramp built. Block 1 is currently owned by the MSFA, the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority, and they will, they have retained Ryan Companies through a request for proposals process to build this parking ramp that will serve the stadium, as well as serve workers at Wells Fargo and the general public. The configuration of that ramp on that block is such is that there's a parcel of land on the south side that we call the liner parcel, and that is a developable parcel. In addition to that liner parcel, there is the air rights above the ramp, and it's possible to build additional structure above that parking ramp. The parking ramp is currently planned to be six stories tall, so it's possible to build additional structure above that six stories. So when we talk about the development rights, we're talking about the combination of the liner parcel and the air rights. So over the last several months, we've been working with Ryan Companies to negotiate a term sheet, and what I want to do, I think you've, we emailed you a copy of the revised term sheet yesterday, and I believe the clerk has given you an updated one, a hard copy right now. So what I want to do is just briefly go through it, and in particular for the members who aren't part of the CD committee, talk about the term sheet generally, but then highlight what has changed over the last week and why we think this is a better deal for the city. So first, looking at the term sheet, Section 1, property, it's talking about the development rights. Two, the developer is Ryan Companies, and I will mention that Ryan Companies is working in partnership with Magellan Development Group. Magellan is building and just, I believe, just opened the LPM Tower in Lowering Park, high-rise apartment tower, so they will be working together on this project. Section 3 is the minimum improvements. What Magellan and Ryan plan to build is a residential story tower of 25 to 35 stories. And as well, and that would all be within the plane of the liner parcel that faces the south end of the ramp. In addition, they need some parking for their residence, and so they're proposing to build a seventh floor of parking to the ramp, and that would be for the residence of that tower. So that is what Plan A is, is to build that residential tower. However, if something were to occur that the residential tower proves unfeasible, then Ryan could build something else with it, within those development rights, potentially an office tower, if that was feasible, potentially a hotel, if that was feasible, potentially maybe a lower-rise residential building, if that was feasible. And I'll talk about, a little bit more about how those scenarios might occur, sort of the timing of it. Number four is the purchase option. So a thing to understand about this, this term sheet is, is what we'll be entering into with Ryan is a purchase option development contract, so it'll be giving, giving Ryan an option to purchase the development rights. So why are we doing it that way? Why aren't we just selling it to them? Well, part of the reason is because there is a mismatch in timing between the ramp, the parking ramp project, and the, this development rights project. So right now, Ryan is designing that parking ramp. It's pretty much very close to finalizing the design of that parking ramp and, and is in the process of getting building permits, is already, I believe, abating the building that's, that's there now for demolition, to preparation for demolition, and will be needing to order materials for the parking ramp next month. So this parking ramp process is, is unfolding as we speak. The key thing about the ramp is that there needs to be changes to the base ramp design in order to accommodate a development on these development rights. And so, you know, for example, there was, the lobby for the parking ramp was supposed to be on Park Avenue, or I'm sorry, on Chicago, and, I'm sorry, Park Avenue and Fourth Street, but now it's being moved over Chicago Avenue, for example. Those changes need to be incorporated into the ramp design and the construction costs now, and Ryan is willing to make those, make the investment in those design costs and those construction costs now, even though they don't have a deal finalized with Magellan. So that's why this is a purchase option agreement, is we are, is Ryan is going to have the option to purchase the development rights, which gives them time to work out their deal with Magellan. But at the same time, they are going to have some certainty that they have the development rights, and I'll talk about how long that is. And so that gives, because of that certainty, that they're therefore willing to make the investment into the ramp, which is good for them, but it's also good for us because we get a ramp that is built to accommodate a development, whether it's this residential tower or likely another tower. So the first period of this option period is Ryan will have until the end of 2015 to try to get this deal closed with Magellan. They are paying us something for that initial option period. They're going to pay us $300,000. That'll be non-refundable. They'll pay it upon execution of the contract, which we expect this fall. Number, number six is the option requirements. So this is where I was talking about the improvements that are needed to the ramp, and it lists them there. And Ryan has estimated that those improvements are going to cost $1.3 to $1.6 million. So the thing, from Ryan's perspective, they are paying us $300,000 now, basically this fall, as well as spending $1.3 to $1.6 million in the near term on these ramp modifications. And so they're, they're willing to make that investment now in response, in return for this, this, this purchase option and the, and the development periods that it includes. Next page, number seven, option extensions. This lays out that Ryan, so their initial option period is through the end of 2015. Ryan can extend that option period on an annual basis, a yearly basis, by paying us an additional $60,000, and they can make those extensions up to seven years, which if they fully exercise those options, would take their development rights out through Next section is the purchase price. So at closing, which would likely happen sometime next year, Ryan would pay the city $2 million. In addition, when Ryan finishes the residential tower, they will start, they will pay the city a series of payments totaling $1 million, and it's basically $200,000 per quarter starting upon completion of the tower. So this is one of the areas where the term sheet has changed since last week. Last week, where we were is that Ryan was going to begin paying that million-dollar payment once the tower reached a leasing threshold or leasing, leasing milestone of 70% occupancy. What Ryan has been willing to do is to start that, those payments, those payments that total $1 million earlier upon completion of the tower, when the tower achieves its certificate of occupancy. So we get those payments earlier, and by the way, we do, even though they are spread over time, we get them with interest. So that's the first major change from last week. Next page, closing date. Expect to close by the end of 2015. There's some dates by which Ryan needs to start construction and need to complete their project. Number 11 is, is something that was also important to us, that the developer, Ryan, is going to use best efforts to raise funds for the downtown east green space that we are in the process of developing, and I, and we believe that Ryan is going to take a leadership role in raising private funds for, for that space. 12, 13, 14, I'd say are more legal in nature. Section 15, we do need some participation from the Minnesota Sports Facilities Authority. It's their ramp after all, and so we need them to participate in conveying the property, the development rights to us, as well as we need them to approve to some of the design changes to the ramp that will, that will accommodate the development. So then last section, last page, number 16, this is the second major change to the term sheet from last week. So last week, we didn't even have a Section 16, but now we do. And so what does Section 16 do? Section 16 gives the city the option to terminate Ryan's purchase option. So we have, now have a choice to terminate Ryan's purchase option under certain conditions. So what are those conditions? Language reads, "It's the earlier of the time that we get written approval from the MSFA and effectively the Vikings that the 200 spaces, the level seven, the parking that Ryan would build, will have unfettered access through the ramp." This has been one of the major issues, is that the Vikings in particular want to restrict the access of those parkers during stadium events. So an event, so in fact, they don't want people coming out from that seventh floor and, and trying to exit the ramp and potentially extending exit times. So we need them to approve, give their approval that those, that seventh floor parking will have unrestricted access. So, so as soon as we get that, that would start a clock. If we don't get that, then there's this outside date of December 31, 2015. And if, by that time, Ryan, that, if we, if we have not achieved the approval from the Sports Forces Authority on the torn spaces, then the clock starts at the end of December 2015. So what happens with the clock? Well, when the clock starts upon either of those two triggers, Ryan will have 180 days to submit plans for their, for their project to the city. So that's their first milestone, and they have to submit the plans. And they're going to submit, they're going to submit plans if they think they have a feasible project. So if they, if they don't submit those plans with 180 days, then the city has an option to basically take them out of the deal. Now, that option, that termination of their option comes at a cost. Since Ryan has invested money into the ramp modifications, this 1.3 to 1.6 million, they would like to be reimbursed for that if they are out of the deal. So the city has the option to take Ryan out of the deal, but it will, it would cost the city up to $1.6 million based on the actual costs that the city would have rights to verify and audit. So that's the first point. That's the first opportunity for the city to cancel the deal. Second is if Ryan has submitted plans, but they are not able to close within 60 days of receiving the city approval. So they submitted their plans, it's gone through the approval process. If they can't close the deal, for example, they can't secure their financing, then the city has a second chance, a second opportunity to take Ryan out of the deal. And that came, that chance comes with the same cost of reimbursing Ryan for that 1.3, 1.6 million dollars. So that is the second major change that's occurred to this term sheet. So that's it. Madam Chair, that's why, that's what I would have. I defer any questions or...
Okay, and I'm just turning to Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions, but I do have a few brief comments just to outline the major differences between the proposal and the term sheet that Ryan provided prior to the CD RS meeting and today. There are some really serious differences. The first one is the buyback option. Councilmember Goodman artfully stated that without the buyback option, we were kind of in trouble. In other words, Ryan could get the parcel, get the rights to develop, they could not develop feasibly, and then they would be able to land bank and have it around for seven years, really, when we wouldn't have the ability to do anything. Now, we not only have one buyback option and trigger point, we have two buyback options and trigger points. And if the Magellan deal, for some reason, and we all hope that doesn't take place, but if for some reason it falls through, we have the option of getting the property back, reissuing an RFP, and moving forward with a different developer and a different development. The second piece is the final million dollars. The final million dollars previously was to be paid upon 70% occupancy. So in other words, we were waiting for the building to get rented out or sold out for us to get our money. Now, we are getting that money as soon as the building is up and the certificate of occupancy is issued. That, that's not a minor change, that's, that's pretty serious. The final piece is, is something that I pointed out during the CD RS meeting, which is the, the property taxes. The, there, as many people knew, saw during the, during the CD RS meeting, there were two sort of competing proposals, only one of which, the Ryan proposal, that we're even permitted to look at today. And, you know, on its face, it looked like, I'll just say, the Vikings' proposal was a higher price tag. It's not. The Vikings' proposal had 100 fewer units, and due to that 100 fewer units, we will be able to collect substantially fewer property taxes. The, the present value of those property taxes right now, if we were to take that value right now, the difference would be $3.5 million. So if you add $3.5 million to 3, you're at $6.5 million, which is of course more than 4.6, which is what the Vikings were proposing. This is, in addition to the, the changes that have been made since the CD RS meeting, there are a couple pieces that are not outlined in the term sheet that we've discussed an extent with, with Ryan. One of them is the payment of $200,000 to hire a fundraiser for the green space in front of the stadium, whatever you want to call it. And the, the second piece that we've discussed an extent is a, is a police substation. As you know, just having a green space in and of itself isn't necessarily safe, so having some additional eyes on the park by trained officers is, is critical. So, you know, I, I think we are in a good point now. A lot of the problems that were previously raised have been addressed, and I and/or Mr. Mercer, I'm sure, are happy to answer any additional questions any of my colleagues may have.
All right. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. And I am not on the CD Committee anymore, sometimes regretfully, sometimes with relief, but, so I'm just trying to figure out what all this actually represents, and I'll confess that my initial response was that we had a deal, we had an arrangement, we had a commitment, and all of a sudden, somebody's not following through. When we went through this fair process, we chose them to, to perform, and now they're coming back saying we can't perform. So it seemed like what the fair thing to do and reasonable thing to do would be to say, okay, that didn't work, let's go out for a request for proposals, and let's see what's actually out there so it can be fair, especially when there's some strange last-minute new proposal that's hurled in from the sidelines from the Vikings. Now I'm feeling, I'm growing pressure as staff is trying to address concerns, and, and there's this meeting and discussions going on between the committee and now, and there's a new term sheet to figure out. So forgive me if I am way behind everybody else, but I do have a couple questions. And one of the questions that I'm just trying to figure out is, who actually is going to own the ramp when this is done? Are this, or is it going to be partly privately owned, partly publicly owned? Is the city going to be owning some of the ramp? That's my first question.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, the MSFA currently owns all of Block 1, and they will own all of the ramp, all of the ramp up to the sixth floor.
So there'll be one floor that they won't own?
So the additional floor that Ryan is proposing to build would be privately owned by the same entity that would own the residential tower.
And when we talk about the purchase, what are, what is being purchased by whom, from whom?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, the, the MSFA owns all of the property, all the real estate in, on Block 1 right now. When the, when the ramp is built, what is going to happen, it's a, a real estate law process of creating a vertical registered land survey, which will basically think of that block in a three-dimensional sense and cut... basically think of that block in a three-dimensional sense and cut it up into different parcels. So it's not just parcels on a two-dimensional plane, but parcels within the air. And so the MSFA will own the property, the box, if you will, of the parking ramp up to the sixth floor. They will, we will create, when we first create this parcel, it will be of the development rights, there'll be this liner parcel on the ground, as well as a plane up into the sky, as well as, starting on the, basically, the seventh floor of the ramp and going up to the sky is another piece of property. The MSFA will initially own all that when it's owned, but the deal is that MSFA will convey that property to whoever we have selected to develop that development rights. And so the city will never own fee title to any of the property on this block. The MSFA, the real estate transaction will be between the MSFA and the entity that Ryan sets up to own the development rights.
But we will have veto power over that purchase? Because we were able to get air rights, but it sounds like we have a little parcel, linear parcel rights too, of the project, correct?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, that is correct. In the broader Downtown East deal that the city, the MSFA and Ryan negotiated last year, and that City Council approved last year, this is one of the things that the city got, was the rights to decide how these development rights were going to unfold, who would develop them, what would be developed there, and also that the city would get the money, proceeds from the sale.
And we got that essentially because we are giving all the money to the MSFA to build their parking ramp.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I would say the Downtown East, the broader deal for the Downtown East, was a complex deal with many moving parts, many interrelated pieces of negotiation that the three parties all put together. So I think it's difficult to say that we got the development rights for any one particular thing within the deal, but I would say that when it comes to the parking ramp, the city is providing financing for approximately two-thirds of the cost of building that parking ramp. And the Sports Facilities Authority is providing funding for the additional, approximately one-third of that parking ramp budget.
And what was the original amount that we were supposed to receive in exchange for these air and parcel rights?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, the amount, when Ryan proposed to, responded to our request for proposals earlier this year, the amount that they proposed for the purchase price was 5.6 million.
And what's the total that they're proposing now?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, the total is $3 million.
And does the $3 million include what it will cost them to reinforce the six-story ramp to handle buildings on top?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, that $3 million does not. So the 1.3 to 1.6 that it would cost to modify the ramp is above and beyond the $3 million that Ryan would pay. So if you ask Ryan, they would say, "We're paying 4.6."
Right, but out of the five, it would have also been considered additional to the 5.6?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, that is correct.
So that's a significant, it's a significant amount of money that we're not going to be getting, that we were told that we would be getting. What do you think the chances are that they'll come back wanting a new term sheet in a few months because they realize they can't actually perform and get us the $3 million for the air rights that we wanted, given their recent track record?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I would say those chances are low. I think Ryan has negotiated this term sheet such that they think that they will be able to perform, given it. So I would say it was low.
Why can't we just wait until they actually have a deal with the developer? So this is all contingent on speculative negotiations that are going on behind closed doors between parties that we, you know, aren't aligned with necessarily and everything, but we aren't part of the negotiations. Why can't we just wait and see if they can actually get their development partner lined up first and not take all this risk and uncertainty?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I would say the reason is, as I mentioned before, that unfortunately, there is this mismatch in the timing of the design and construction process of the ramp, and the design and construction process that I think we'd all prefer to take with the development rights. And that mismatch is that the ramp is being designed right now and will be built, basically, starting within a matter of weeks. And so Ryan, as the designer and builder of that ramp, has to make decisions about the design and construction of that ramp, and has to make decisions about which features of the ramp will go in there or not to accommodate a development.
Is there a state requirement that says the ramp must be completed to serve this many cars on opening day for the Vikings? Who's created this timeline? I guess, because it seems like we've seen projects adjust and slow down and accommodate, and there's probably other places where fans could park for opening day. So that doesn't quite, it doesn't fit Ryan's timeline. I hear that. That doesn't tell me really who's telling us that this, or telling somebody that this has to get done at a certain time, and we can't wait for another two weeks for the developer to make a deal.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I would say who's done this? Well, in part, it's us, because these timings, these deadlines are laid out in the agreements related to the broader Downtown East deal, which we are a party to, that MSFA was a party to, that Ryan was a party to. So in those deals, in the development agreement for that, it lays out the timings. Now, those timings reflect the preferences of the Sports Facilities Authority, and particularly the Vikings, and as well as Ryan, given how the financing of this ramp works, to have the ramp done and completed by the end of 2015 so that it can begin operations at the beginning of 2016.
So we just have to renegotiate the term sheet for that and create a little delay so that we could finish this? It's just our agreement with some other entities that's driving the timeline.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, we are past the term sheet stage on that. We have actual executed binding legal documents for that, and if we were to try to amend those, we would need the consent of the other parties to those agreements, which include Ryan and the Sports Facilities Authority.
So the Sports Facilities Authority and Ryan are dictating to us the timeline? Because they won't agree with this. If we, as a council, and the mayor, all 14 of us, said, "We need to wait a month and sort this out," they would say no, and we'd be bound by them.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I think the city finance officer would like to address that.
The existing Downtown East development agreements and all the ancillary related agreements deal with the green space, the Wells Fargo Towers, and the parking ramp. There are tri-party arrangements that we all agreed to, to drive the development and the park. We have subsequently, to executing those agreements, sold our bonds to finance our share of the entire project, and we are relying on Ryan's payments under the bond documents to cover our debt service for those first 10 years on those bonds. We have an absolute vested interest in getting that ramp done sooner than later, for a variety of reasons, including getting the park financed and getting Wells Fargo financed.
So if we went out for a new RFP, that would not work for us either, or for anybody else, because that would delay it as well. We have no option, it sounds like you're saying we have absolutely no option to meet our timeline to ourselves and to our two partners in this. We are pushed to come to some kind of agreement with Ryan and the Sports Authority.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, the city has a vested interest in seeing the development rights related to the ramp and the liner parcel come to fruition sooner rather than later. It provides a source of capital that we can deploy at our discretion, and to see a development project there that is more likely rather than less, and bigger rather than smaller.
Well, I get that, and I understand that. And if we thought we could get that better, if we waited, that seems like it would be a good option, but I'm hearing that waiting is not an option, because then the ramp won't be done in time and will be sued for potential met.
And Mr. Carpenter, I'm just unclear, because I know our city attorney, and you can't sort of see all this, was trying to get in, and I'm unclear if she would like to comment right now before your response, or...
The...
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Carpenter, and then Ms. Segal.
That is precisely why we have struck the deal, or proposing to strike the deal, to retain the buyout option, so that if certain things don't happen on the pace we are expecting, we can step in and take different control to make sure that the outcomes that are in our best interests happen as fast as they can.
Ms. Segal.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Gordon, it would be possible, I think, as has been discussed and considered, for the city to go ahead and front the funding to reinforce the ramp. That is the timeline. That was part of the deal with the stadium funding, with being able to use state bond money, even though the city is going to be getting 100% of the revenues, the profits, above operating costs for that ramp, to pay for the green space, the commons, as well as to pay back the city for its financing of the ramp. So the city could decide that we will go ahead and, with city resources, pay to reinforce the ramp. The proposal in front of you is that Ryan is willing to run that risk and put that money in, in exchange for a $300,000 option that they would stand to lose if the deal doesn't go forward. And so if the deal doesn't go forward, then the city, under this new buyback proposal, would have the option to defer payment, if you will, to reinforce the ramp. We would reimburse Ryan for the hard cost of reinforcing the ramp so that a development can proceed on that parcel. It's unfortunate that the timing did not align, but it didn't. The stadium wanted a parking ramp that would be open when the stadium opened. That's reasonable, that's rational, and in coming to this, this kind of merged-interest solution here, that was a deal that was struck a while back, but this option is open to the city. If you don't like any uncertainty, I think the option for the city is to go ahead and fund the reinforcement itself, or to say, you know, that there won't be any reinforcements that will really limit future development rights on this parcel.
Thank you, that's actually very helpful. So that would show us one option, which would cost us a lot of money, to still meet the timeline and not have to prematurely agree to a whiskey proposal. I just have one more question I wanted to ask, and this has to do with the city option to terminate the purchase option. It looks to me like that's a city option, but that could be vetoed by the Vikings. Is that true?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I'd say there are two triggers, and so it's convincing that our option, there's this, the first sentence about the commencing upon the earlier of, A, the written approval of the MSFA Sports Facilities Authority, or B, this set date of December 31, 2015. So in order for the clock to be triggered by the first option, the written approval from the MSFA, we would need consent from, MSFA would need to gather consent from the Vikings to do that. But if that is not coming, we still have the set date of December 31 that would start the clock. And Madam Chair, I'll turn it...
So there is a way to terminate without Vikings' consent?
Just, yes, we can exercise the option without anybody's consent. It's our sole discretion to exercise the option once it is created.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. You know, while I'm hearing this, I mean, it just seems like, Mr. Mercer, I mean, is this kind of the best worst-case scenario for us, you know, as a city? I mean, because, you know, at this point, we're kind of late in the game, right? I mean, it's just, you know, the timeline is very short, or we just got to move pretty quickly. I mean, this is kind of the best that we can do at this point. Is that a fair characterization of this?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang, my view is this is the best deal that we can get from Ryan, and I think that the Ryan team is the best team to pull off this development. As the finance officer was saying, we want the greatest chances to realize a development that's bigger rather than smaller, sooner rather than later. And I think it's the consensus of the staff team that this term sheet represents that opportunity best.
Okay, and I, you know, I have a question about the process here. So, you know, RFP went out, how many responses did we get?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang, the city issued an RFP for these development rights in January of this year. In March, in response to that, we received two responses, and in March, the City Council designated Ryan Companies as the developer.
Who was the other response?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang, the other respondent was a team led by Mortensen Development.
Okay, and so one of my issues with this is that, you know, I mean, some, I'd heard the term a bait and switch, you know, in this situation, and I guess, I mean, my concern is, how do we prevent this from happening in the future? I mean, are we going to set in motion, you know, some policies here so that something like this can't happen in the future, or there are penalties to this happening in the future, or just... Or is that just not, is that just not preventable?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Yang, I guess my stab at an answer to that would be that, you know, each, an RFP for each property is, you know, presents its own unique circumstances in terms of the conditions around it, and this RFP certainly presented some very unique conditions, given that it really isn't our property, it's owned by someone else, that someone else has some significant rights to approve what happens on this property, as well as that there was, you know, really significant time and schedule constraint about how this development could occur. I mean, this whole process has tried to occur as fast as it could. So in terms of whether this raises certain policy questions, things that we should do differently in the future, I think, I certainly haven't had time to reflect on that, but I think that, you know, with each RFP, that we try to set the best conditions for the circumstances of that property.
Councilmember Yang? Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As one of the other new council members who's not on CD RS, I just have some basic questions about the public costs and benefits of this very complicated deal. So my understanding is that we've bonded for three things: the ramp, the commons, the land acquisition related to the commons, as well as financing the Wells Fargo Towers. And then, you know, that we're getting back funding from selling the air rights to Ryan. We're also beginning parking revenue over, in perpetuity, from the parking ramp, and then the additional tax revenue that we'll be collecting from all of this development in this part of town, which is very underutilized today. But could you talk through some of the costs and benefits, and do we think that over time the city will recoup our financial investment? And then I'll let you answer that question.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, I'll start with that answer on that, but I'll also defer to the city finance officer if he wants to add anything. I would say the city financing for the Downtown East deal, we issued approximately $62 million in general obligation bonds. There are three buckets of costs that those bonds are going towards. There are elements of this project that those bonds are financing. One is a portion of the cost of constructing the parking ramp. A second is costs related to the acquisition and some, and the clearing and some basic preparations to the green space, the Downtown East Commons. And a third bucket is something we call the other site costs, which, you know, are occurring on, partially on the Wells Fargo buildings, but it's related to some site preparation costs, environmental cleanup, some structural, geotechnical work on those sites. So the city is not financing the construction of the Wells Fargo Towers, but is providing some financing for the preparation of those sites and some related infrastructure. So those bonds are issued, and they're, the source to paying back those bonds... So those bonds are issued, and they're the source to paying back those bonds, there's at least, there's sort of two dimensions to this. One is, the Finance Officer mentioned, there's this initial period, it will probably last about 10 years, where Ryan is making set guaranteed payments to the city of Minneapolis. We structured the bond issuance such to match what those set payments are going to be. So for at least the first 10 years, our bond debt service is covered by those payments from Ryan. Now, Ryan is willing to make that guarantee and make those payments because for that, for that, for that period, they are the ones who get the revenues from the parking ramp. So their projections of the parking ramp are such that gave them confidence that they could afford to make those payments to the city. There are certain thresholds related to the revenue and performance of that ramp that at some point Ryan will go away. Again, we expect it around 10 years, and at that point, the MSFA will take back control of the operations of the ramp, because keep in mind they're owning it this whole time, but they'll take back control of the operations of the ramp. However, we still get the revenue, we still get the income from the ramp, and we expect the revenue from that ramp to go towards the debt service for the bonds that we have issued. So that's how the financing generally works. In terms of sort of cost benefits to the public, the fiscal impacts, we, we did modeling of what the projected property tax impacts of the broader Downtown East project were. I don't have those at my fingertips right now, but certainly those are embedded in the staff reports and materials from, from this project prior. So, Madam Chair, that's, that's what I'd say.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, that was excellent, Myles. Well done. In its essence, with a stream of cash, future cash flow to pay back and cover our existing bonded indebtedness, we are, over time, covered from our financing obligations there, and therefore can deem it not funding anything, but contributing from a financing perspective to then get the incremental tax value for all jurisdictions, not just the city, but also the county and the school district, from this development, and the public amenity that is the commons, would suggest it to us when we entered into this, that the public cost risk versus the benefit was well worth taking.
Just a follow-up question, then. I'm one of these people that hope people will drive less in the future, and so I'm curious about the dependence of the financing on future parking revenue, and I'm sure you've thought this through, but just wondered if you could respond to the risk that we're taking on that, that in terms of the parking revenue past the 10 years that we have guaranteed.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, we gave that a lot of thought during this transaction and these ongoing discussions, and I guess what I would say is there's two significant mitigate, three significant mitigating factors. One, to just remind folks that the cash flow comes not just from the new ramp, but from the existing Downtown East Underground ramp. So there's 2,000 stalls that contribute. To the extent that Wells Fargo and other employers are growing in their downtown presence, the expectation would be that some set of those will continue to require parking. So there's confidence there. And perhaps most importantly, in the agreements governing our bonded, our bond offering, we are able to get reimbursed from any future parking revenues until we have been totally made whole on our debt service payments. So even if in one year, for example, in that year, there's a $4 million debt service payment and we only get $3.5 million from parking revenue, that sort of goes into the hopper and we get that money back eventually. So unless one assumes that those ramps stay largely empty for the foreseeable future, we're confident that our risk profile is mitigated.
Thank you. I guess I'll just say, I don't love that we're creating a financial incentive for the city to want people to drive into downtown, but I do understand the complexities of this deal. And then just one final comment, the commons has gotten a lot of discussion in the public, and we're not talking about the details of that today, but I just wanted to acknowledge that staff is working really hard, and I know Councilmember Frye is spending a lot of time working through the details of how to finance that, to design that space, to finance it, to operate it, that we all, I think, understand how complicated that is, and that there's a strong commitment from the city to find all those details as we go forward. No one wants to create a vacant, underutilized space in downtown. And so I know we just even issued an RFP, I think this week or last week, to go through the design details that will help understand the costs of that, so that then all of these actors in the city, especially, I know Councilmember Frye is providing a lot of leadership here to can go find the funds that we will need to make that successful. So thanks for their work on that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It sounds like new council members need a briefing on Downtown East, because we spent a lot of time talking about Downtown East, and that's not really what we're here to discuss today. But I do want to make a couple of comments about Downtown East since it came up, and I do think, I'm happy to have a briefing in CD, I always like to hear it again, and I think you pick up something new every time, I'm happy to do that. The main reason that a majority of people on the council voted for Downtown East was because we didn't want to have a bad deal become a worse deal. Those of us that didn't support the funding of the stadium wanted to make sure that if the stadium was going to be in the middle of our city in an area that could be redeveloped, something great happened as a result of it. And bringing 5,000 new jobs into downtown from Wells Fargo was a fairly good cost benefit. Not, not only the 5,000-plus jobs from Wells Fargo, but three, three apartment buildings or condos that will be built by Ryan lining the parcels, as well as a parcel that's going to be adjacent to the jail. So I think that in the end, it is kind of a parking house of cards, because it's using parking revenue and parking revenue bonds in order to pay off the bonds to do all of these other things. But I think we have to remember that on, just on the Vikings' revenue alone, 60,000-plus people come to a Vikings game and there's maybe like 5,000 parking spaces, so everyone cannot come and park really close. In fact, in our whole parking system in the city, the part we own, 24,000, 25,000 parking spaces all over downtown, wouldn't be enough just for those Vikings games and events. Clearly, people will come through other modes of transportation and they'll carpool, but these ramps are the closest, so we're hoping that at least on those days and for other events, there will be enough parking revenue. And then you add up the Wells Fargo employees, let's say, half drive, and I think their mode split right now is about half, if it's not, most businesses downtown are in the 60-40, 50-50 split. There'll still be people from Wells Fargo coming and needing to park in those ramps, and there'll be people who come to live downtown who will need parking for their housing. We like to think that people downtown don't need to have cars, but the reality is, they still want to have a car even if they don't want to drive it. So I, I do think the cost benefit with regard to the overall East Downtown project is there, and I appreciate Councilmember Bender bringing that issue up. What we're talking about today is kind of a subsection of the larger deal, which was, I think our staff's very good thinking, and Mayor Ryback's very good thinking, that if the Sports Facilities Commission was putting up a ramp, we shouldn't just let them do a ramp. It should be lined by something, potentially housing, maybe there should be air rights on top of it. We certainly don't want an entire square block of only a ramp with nothing on it in that location. And there were only two bidders to the RFP. I will argue, and my friends at Ryan will probably kick me for saying this, when you control the building of the ramp and you control all the knowledge about the cost, it's very hard for other developers to come in and make a bid, because they don't know what the costs are, for example, to reinforce the ramp. And Mortenson said that. They essentially said, "We can't get any information from Ryan about what it would cost to reinforce the ramp, so we can't give you a good estimate of that." And other developers just didn't bid at all. So Ryan essentially did have the inside deal on this because they were already building the ramp. But their money is the same color as everybody else's money, and it's about the same amount as what we would get from someone else, and I think there was a feeling to move forward. This deal is different. Why is the deal different? Well, partially the deal is different because we've had a hard time figuring out how to park the people who would be living in that building. We, of course, would like to see them parked in the ramp itself. The state has said, "No, you can't do that." That's something we didn't know at that time, that we now know. So now Magellan and Ryan are saying, "Well, we have to build some parking," and now what we're doing is we're actually letting the Vikings veto that. So I'm interested in Mr. Mercer's point of view, if the clawback or the buyout option is reliant on the Vikings. The trigger is the Vikings and the Sports Facilities Commission saying, "Yes, it's okay to build that seventh level." And we do think Michelle Comhale-Ginnis might, might work with us, she said as much in the paper. We don't know what the Vikings are going to do, but I can imagine after going through this process and now being annoyed that they're not chosen, giving them the power to veto, it might mean that nothing will happen, correct?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Goodman, I would say the Vikings have power over one of the triggers of the, of the, of the termination option. So looking at that language, it's the earlier of that written, the approval from MSFA and the Vikings for those 200, for the 200 spaces, or the set date of December 31st, 2015. So if they, if the Vikings or MSFA just refuse to grant their approval come December 31st, then the city has, then, then the, then the clock starts on the city's termination option.
All right, so it's a pretty big risk, because the Vikings know this, and so they're sitting out there saying, "All we got to do is hang out for 14 months and say no, and then we, we stifle those people at Ryan and stick the city in the process, and what are they going to do? Do a new RFP, and we might do a new RFP at that time, or we might not." What's the negative to the Vikings? I mean, we've given them even more power in this agreement by giving them the veto power to say they can't build the extra parking spaces.
Madam Chair, I think, Councilmember Frye, did you want to?
Well, just what's the answer, Myles? Is that true or not true?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Goodman, we have, we have given, we have made one of the triggers contingent upon the MSFA, effectively the Vikings, to give their consent on those 200 spaces. Yes.
So we could be sitting here on that second trigger date with the same decision we have right now, which is essentially do an art, new RFP right now, or do a new RFP 15 months from now, when the Vikings say no to our friends at Ryan?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Goodman, we could be sitting here come December 15th and realize that December, December 31st, 2015 is the start of a clock. It's not, so it'd be actually a couple of months after that, that Ryan would have some time to submit their plans. But if, if they have not submitted their plans, then we could be sitting here deciding, do we want to extra, do we want to terminate their option and pay the money, pay them back for the, for the improvements that they've made to the ramp?
And by then, there might not even be a Vikings deal. So then, so the Vikings stifle it for 15 months, Ryan can't move forward, we have to determine whether or not we're going to give them now eight, seven years at a sweetheart deal, $60,000 a year to potentially develop something, or we have to do a new RFP kind of in the middle of the opening of the stadium.
I will note that Ms. Segal wanted to add some comments.
Sure.
As part of this dialogue.
Madam Chair and Councilmember Goodman, that is a real risk here. That is a real risk. On the other hand, the Vikings are limited to what's in the agreement, so they do not have a discretionary veto right over this development. It has due their, their concerns that they've expressed about this extra level of parking, which I guess they're not opposed to, it's, it's a more narrow issue, are limited by the agreements between them and the MSFA, and then between the MSFA and Ryan and the city. So they do not have just a discretionary unlimited veto right. The other point is that the Vikings have expressed, I assume they've expressed this to members of the council, I know they've expressed this to us in meetings as well, that they are concerned about having the development done before the stadium opens, because they do not want construction to occur after the stadium opens, for all sorts of reasons. And they want the amenity deck, you know, that, that's part of what they've talked about, that's part of what they've put into their proposal, I understand that's part of what they've talked to Ryan about. So I think they've got some difficult decisions ahead of them as well, but it is a real risk that, that you are presenting.
Madam Chair, can I just ask Ms. Segal, with regard to this amenity deck, do we hold the right to sell the amenity deck? Or are we just giving that a right, right to Ryan and they could sell the amenity deck space to the Vikings and make money on that instead of us?
Madam Chair and Councilmember Goodman, I'm going to defer to Mr. Mercer on that point.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Goodman, when we sell the air rights to, when we sell the development rights to Ryan, should be the liner parcel as well as the air rights above the ramp, which would, we are selling both the seventh floor parking, the space for the seventh floor parking, as well as the space for the eighth floor amenity deck.
Okay, so we should know that in the end, Ryan could turn around and charge the Vikings $2 million and they then don't pay anything. So that seems like something we've left on the table, that we perhaps should not have left on the table. What we're selling is the liner parcel, right, really? And, because they're not building anything on top of the seventh floor except for this parking deck that they may or may not be able to get permission for. But we should be aware then, we could fool us once, shame on us, fool us twice, shame on us, even worse. I mean, now we could be in a situation where they could sell that amenity deck for a high price to the Vikings who really want it, to work out their deal on the parking, and we get nothing. Wow, that's something to bring up at the last minute.
All right, Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got like 15 points that I want to address here that I think should help clear a whole lot of this up. The first is the, first is the, the trigger of the buyback option. Councilmember Goodman pointed out that the, the trigger of the buyback option is dependent on approval of the stalls. You know, that, that, this is not something that was unintentional. We, we did this on purpose, and it's because, you know, nobody's been saying it yet, but up until this point, a lot of the difficulty in getting this done, a big reason for the drop in the price has been, one, the approval of the 200 additional stalls, and, two, the ingress and egress from that ramp. In other words, at least thus far, there has not been an allowance by the Vikings to have people from the residential that is proposed to be built leave during the second half of the game. That egress would account for approximately 30 seconds of additional time. So to get additional economic development, to, to have eyes on the park, to, to generate tax revenue, they would not allow 30 seconds. Now, this trigger is put in here because it's very, it's clear as day that the Vikings are trying to get a hold of this parcel and to convince us that we should give the, the property to them right off the bat. And if there were a buyback option without this trigger in place, then the Vikings could just hold off, try and crash the deal by refusing to grant the allowance, and then swoop in with a cape and try and save the day with their own deal. That, that, that's what we're not allowing to happen. So in its place, in order for them to even get to our opportunity to buy the property back, we first have to get the approvals of those 200 additional stalls and the operations of that space. So for them to get what they want, they have to approve the 200 additional stalls. So this was put in there very, very intentionally. Now, in the event they just decide to bomb the whole thing and not give approvals anyway, one, shame on them, because that's absolutely ridiculous, but, two, in that event, we can still buy back the property as of December 31st of 2015. And what that means is that we will have construction going on in that space while games are being played, possibly one of which is the Super Bowl. That's something that they don't want. So if they think they're going to stop the development, they'll only stop it temporarily, and they will not be stopping it for the long term, because I have no problem building while games are going on. They may not like that, we're fine with it. Then, you know, the, I think Councilmember Goodman also brought up the, the amenity deck on top. I think approximately two-thirds of that amenity deck is to be used by the residential itself. The remaining one-third, yes, it could ultimately be sold to the Vikings. That's one of the benefits that Ryan gets from that deal. They've agreed to a whole bunch of other concessions since that are benefits to our, to us, to our city. And then to, to address just a couple of Councilmember Gordon's points, why, why can't we wait right now? One of them, which I think has been exhausted at this point, is the bond issue. We need to get the return on our city bonds, the sooner the better. And if we've got the parking being built after that January of 2016 timeframe, then we and/or Ryan are losing about a quarter of a million dollars per month going forward, because that's approximate, that's the approximate amount that we, of revenue that we would be generating from that ramp that would be going to pay off the bonds for the yard. Next point is why we need to do this sooner rather than later, regardless of whether we're going with Ryan or somebody else, is, I mean, Ryan's got $300,000 that they're putting up front right now. That's $300,000 that we need to then dump into the design and the consultant that we're planning on hiring for the yard. So we need, we need this money now, we need to be moving forward now. So, we need this money now, we need to be moving forward now, regardless of whether it's Ryan or somebody else. And I just really want to reiterate this point. You know, we are expecting all parties in this whole operation right here to be, to be negotiating and operating in good faith. We've got, you know, 15 trillion different cooks in the kitchen right now. We've got the MSFA, we've got the Vikings, we've got the city, we've got Ryan and Wells Fargo, and, you know, I would say it is not, it is not operating in good faith if you're refusing to allow 200 additional stalls, which they contemplated building themselves, one, and, two, if they're refusing to allow ingress or egress from a ramp 30 additional seconds. If, you know, Councilmember Bender correctly pointed out that the parking should not, it's frustrating that parking is the central issue to this whole thing, I agree. It would be even more frustrating if, one, parking is the central issue, and, two, 30 seconds of leaving that parking becomes the, what quashes a deal. So, I mean, we're calling on the Vikings right now, and the MSFA, to grant approvals for a project that would dramatically help the city.
My question is, will there be some time and potential for term sheet modifications between now and Friday, if they seem desirable? I'm still hearing concerns from the council members up here, maybe there's some reassurances we could even get from other folks before Friday about these, the seventh story, but there's the amenity deck, and there's other issues. So, will there be some more opportunities? It's Wednesday, we've got a little bit of time. It seemed there was a good turnaround on this term sheet from the Monday meeting. Are there other discussions that we expect to be going on today and tomorrow?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, it is true that today is more informational and a briefing about what has changed with this term sheet. Any motion to modify it will, and any votes to modify it, will occur on Friday.
So, we could have the chair of the committee come in with another term sheet on Friday as the substitute, because what the committee rejected was a different term sheet. So, now we have a new term sheet, correct? And we could potentially have another, some modifications made before Friday.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Gordon, I would characterize this term sheet as a revised term sheet, because there were two main substantive revisions we made to the term sheet that was considered last week, if you want to call that a new term sheet.
Revised, I could be that.
But, you know, I would say there's going to be a revised term sheet submitted on Friday, and I guess it could be this one that's for you today, if whoever on the council wants to submit other revisions or other staff directions, I think that's within the purview of the council.
It could be an exciting meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It seems to me since the original RFP was put out, we've announced that we've been selected as the Super Bowl city, and we might even have potentially more interest in this. Just curious if it was to go back out for RFP, and then Ryan and Mortenson and the Vikings, and perhaps others, might put forward proposals. How long would a process like that take, potentially, if it was maybe, obviously considering the timelines here, a shortened process or something like that? Roughly, what are we talking about in terms of timing?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, we've given some thought to, if we were to do RFP, how would that unfold? And so, you know, let's say we could get an RFP out within, say, like a week, week and a half, call it October 1st. We give respondents at least four weeks to respond. That's how long we gave in the first RFP. And then, upon those responses, receiving those responses, there'd be a period of staff review, and then working towards a city council action to designate a developer. Now, in the last RFP, that process took about six weeks. So, we're looking ahead at the council cycle, our council calendar, and considering that there, you know, some weeks off around Thanksgiving, we were estimating that at the earliest, we could come to council with a designation action in December, whether it be the first or probably, actually, probably the second cycle in December, so that last cycle of the year. And I think that would be the earliest what we could do. And so, then, we would still need a period, that would be the designation action, and then if, as we did in this case, we designated, but then we had to negotiate a term sheet. So, how long it would take to reach the point we are today, if we did a new RFP, would be sometime next year.
And also, just factoring into the timeline, kind of given the expectation around how long it would take to construct, if, for instance, this Ryan project moved forward, would it be ready for the new stadium opening? Essentially, what I'm getting at, what I'm asking here, is if we were to issue a new RFP, if that does come back to us before the end of the year, would that still allow reasonably construction to occur and be ready in time for the Super Bowl, for a hotel and residential and all that, and also the ramp itself for game day and our other requirements?
So, Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, in terms of, could we get something on the development rights built by the Super Bowl, if we went out with a new RFP? Thinking about that quickly, so let's say we reach a deal middle of next year, by middle of next year, there's a couple of months to get entitlements and city approvals and close, but say by the end of next year, let's say construction could start on a project 2000, spring 2016. Yeah, you could assume a construction period of, say, a year and a half, two years, you could maybe finish up by the end of 2017, and Super Bowl is January, February 2018. So, yeah, it's theoretically possible to get a project built on the development rights if we do an RFP by the Super Bowl.
And would we still be meeting our requirements around parking, that parking ramp and the availability for the new stadium?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, I would say that the ramp project is happening on its own timeframe. That, Ryan is working on that right now. They're finalizing the design, working on getting building permits, securing subcontractors, and will start work, ordering materials, and really be starting work next month. So, they are on track to finish that ramp by the end of 2015, plus or minus.
And if we go back out for RFP, do we expect perhaps? Mortenson, have they indicated any interest? Obviously, the Vikings have indicated interest in putting forward a proposal, but is Mortenson interested in coming back to the table with something or something else?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, I've not, what we've heard from Mortenson is in the materials that the Vikings submitted to us, and that we distributed to you all via email yesterday, is that there was a letter from a representative of Mortenson in that, in those materials, stating their interest in being the general contractor for the Vikings.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things, clearly, there's time, they're not moving forward tomorrow either. There's a trigger on the gel, and there's a year-long trigger, so there's clearly time. That, whether we want to take that time is another question. I'm just asking to help Councilmember Fry manage a very complicated situation, that if you have amendments or changes in a very complicated negotiated contract, that you bring them forward to Councilmember Fry in advance. It's just not right to have him in the council meeting be dealing with complicated potential changes to a contract that he might not even know the answers to in the middle of a formal council meeting. So, if you have concerns, or amendments, or changes, or something that you yourself want to discuss with the team, please do that today or tomorrow. I will feel very uncomfortable if we have complicated financial changes to this plan offered as amendments in the council meeting itself. It's disrespectful to the staff, team, including Susan, Kevin, Chuck, and Myles, who have done a lot of work, to have things that they can't even answer or analyze come up as amendments, and we could end up with a contract that Mortenson would look at, that Ryan would look at and say, "We can't possibly do this." They have, we have the responsibility with this partner to make sure that they know what your thoughts are in advance.
All right, thank you, everyone. I appreciate your patience. I know this was an extremely long discussion, but it was, it's a very important project, and I know people had questions. So, thank you, everyone, for your patience. We still have reports from one, two, three, four, five committees, and I might urge colleagues to focus on what you think are highlights. Health, Energy, and Community Engagement is the next committee, with Councilmember Gordon as the chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Very brief report, this item was also referred to Ways and Means, it just has to do with authorizing a contract with the Minneapolis Public Schools to accept some revenue for rental health services and sports physicals through our school-based clinics.
Thank you, and I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management, with that chair come from Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We actually did not have quorum for our meeting, and so, we moved our agenda items to Ways and Means, and so, Chair Quincy will be taking care of some of our issues. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, Transportation and Public Works, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be 14, 13 items. Most items refer to special service districts and the typical operations this season with road repair and sidewalk repair. I will highlight that we have a draft 2040 transportation policy plan that we'll be making comments on, our staff had made comments, and we reviewed them in committee. We'll have an additional amendment to that, that basically refers to streetcars, and this was a request of the Met Council, and separately and earlier, we thought it'd be appropriate to move it forward in this body of comments. And then also, item eight, which is municipal parking lot resolution, there'll be amendment to that, that just adjusts the dollar amount of her removal of duplicate expense costs that were noticed after our committee meeting. But that'll stand for questions.
All right, thank you. Sorry, a little sidebar here. Next, we have Ways and Means, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means Committee will bring forward 29 items for your consideration on Friday. I think they're all fairly routine, contract extensions and amendments of existing programs, acceptance of some various gifts, and some office space agreements. Of note, I would like to point out a couple of things. One was the approval of executing a contract with TASER International and VIEVU in the amount of $85,000 each to provide equipment, service, and video storage for test and evaluation of officer-worn body cameras. This is an extension of what we've done in the past in trying to move forward with testing body cameras within MPD, and that was discussed from a financial level at Ways and Means. We also added a staff direction that asked the police department to report back to the next regularly scheduled meeting of Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management to address the matters regarding the pilot's study, design, and scope. The other item of note, also related to public safety, was the authorizing the, executing a 10-year license and power agreement with XL Energy for installation of a number of public safety camera installations in Minneapolis, all in North Minneapolis, actually. So, this was held over from a cycle, but moving forward now with a reduced amount. That was the reason why we held it over, to make sure that the numbers were right and the best value for the city. So, we're excited about offering those to public safety improvements, as well as the rest of the Ways and Means Committee. So, happy to stand for any questions.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Quincy. And next, we have Zoning and Planning, with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two items to forward from the Zoning and Planning Committee meeting. The first is regarding farm stand regulations, which are zoning code text amendments to allow farm stands, to change the way we permit farm stands in the city, to allow them as accessory uses instead of a separate permit. And the second is the historic designation of the Webster Dinar residence, and this was brought forward by the owner of the property, who's the son of the original owner, and in the seventh ward. So, those are the two items. I know, we did make two amendments to the item number one in committee, and the author of those amendments, Councilmember Gordon, has been following up with folks on those.
All right, thank you. And I'm gonna add one last, very brief item. Councilmember Johnson wants to make a comment on an item that he has authored under resolutions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to call this out for council members, it does require just a little procedural handling that's different, because the resolution for Friday is based on and dependent on the passage of, via council vote, of a pretty non-controversial consent item that will be good for small businesses, customers, and equity and equality in our city. But because of, obviously, its dependence on that vote, we want to be careful in terms of quorum issues. Normally, with resolutions, we put it out there and say, "Let us know if you don't want your name on this resolution." Because of that dependence on this vote, we're asking that if you do want your name on this resolution, please let the clerk's office know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a couple council members in queue, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It didn't have anything to do with the Ways and Means agenda specifically, but I did want to announce to my colleagues and remind folks of the public hearings that are underway for the budget cycle. We had our first yesterday, it was from in the afternoon, covering a variety of departments. The next one is scheduled on Thursday, so I remind council members to feel free to attend those. They're a great way to hear what the departments are being, offering through the recommended budget, and ask questions of that process. So, I just wanted to remind people of that process, and also that Board of Estimant Taxation will be meeting this evening to set the public levy amount.
Thank you, Councilmember Quincy. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On zoning and planning, item number one, I'm somewhat surprised that no one wanted to bring up this issue or discuss it out loud, yet I know there's been a lot of conversation behind the scenes, as well as a lot of conversation via email, as well as incorrect information and accusations going around. So, I would hardly call this minor changes to the farmstead ordinance. This is a change that would allow sales, 75 days of sales in residential neighborhoods, and I'm wondering why Councilmember Gordon hasn't come talk to Council President Johnson or I about our concerns about that? Is it just because you're just gonna change it and push it through on Friday? We were happy to talk about the Ryan thing for an hour, but given the emails I've heard, given the emails I've received from people, and the really hateful, nasty voicemails that have come in accusing me of basically loving potato chips and hating local food, I'm somewhat surprised that this hasn't come up. Why hasn't this come up in the meeting today?
Well, I think, Councilmember Goodman, thank you for bringing it up. I just, I will call on everyone that I see who has asked to speak, and just a reminder to folks, usually we direct our remarks, kind of, you know, to the body as a whole. And Councilmember Gordon, you are in queue.
Thank you. And I, Madam Vice President, I did take the opportunity after the committee meeting to visit with both Councilmember Goodman and Johnson about the concerns about the farmstand ordinance that I authored that came through. Right now, there's two options that I'm looking at, considering, and I also understand that the committee chair is looking at a substitute motion. I'm very interested in allowing the sales at the community gardens, and the review that we did, there was not one single complaint about it. Essentially, we found that what, the ordinance that we had passed was unconstitutional, we couldn't require permits for this, so for the past two years, everyone has been able to do all the sales they want at community gardens whenever they want to. Nobody expects anybody to do 75 days. In fact, I'd be very surprised if the community gardens do very many at all. But this is just opening it up, just saying, you can figure out when you have something that's worthy to sell, and you can sell it. I actually think it's something that people will embrace. So, as the author of the ordinance, and after all the work that I went through with the Food Council and the Planning Commission, I actually appreciated one of the amendments the committee did to extend the hours so that it didn't end at seven. I appreciated that, but I have concerns about the other amendment that essentially prohibits sales ever from any community garden, because that was just stripped out of the ordinance. So, I'm looking at putting it back in. I'm also looking at, and working with Councilmember Reich, a fallback compromise, if that isn't the will of the council as well. And I wasn't trying to hide that from anybody, and I'm sorry if it looks that way to anybody.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Gordon. We have a couple people in queue, Councilmember Johnson, Council President Johnson, excuse me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess I agree with Councilmember Goodman, I feel like I'm being pilloried for, with nasty comments, and my intentions about this are that this was, it's, excuse me, essentially a change to, if you think about it, you could have a have a community garden next to someone's home that could have a stand every single day, 75 days a year, that there would be the ability to buy, that people could drive, could walk, could have money out, that kind of thing. And I think it deserves a legitimate review in front of neighborhood associations or, you know, the people who would be affected by this. And so it's raising the awareness of the potential of this that I think merits some public discussion and information. And realistically, if you think about it, it's not going to affect this year anyway. I suppose if we did it today, people could have some stands. This is September, what, 16th, 17th? We don't have much time left this growing season. I suppose squash or whatever. But we are talking about people being able to have a stand in selling produce in front of their community garden, the community garden that they belong to, next to someone's home potentially. And I think it just, it would be worth talking to neighbors about if they think 75 is too many, or, and we had, what was our number before, Councilmember Gordon? 15? Yes, 15. Maybe there's a place in between there that makes some sense. But this has not been vetted by the community that's going to be affected by it. And I'll tell you, right now, again, guess where this is going to happen? In my neighborhoods that are already getting pressure to use some of these lots that have been developed because of tornado damage, because of foreclosures, you know, and Councilmember Palmasano's ward, they tear a house down and build a new house. We got all these empty lots in North Minneapolis. This is where it's going to happen. So I guess if we want to, we want to have a fulsome discussion with neighbors about this going forward. And I do not appreciate being called names by the advocates for this. That is really frustrating, and I think very unfortunate.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no objection to an amendment that would add the 15 days back. That was an accident or an oversight. There wasn't an intent to take back something that had already been approved and not really even that, all that used. My concern has to do with the amount of citizen participation and a change in a residential zoning district turning into commercial. And I want to use the example of accessory dwelling units and what's happening in my ward right now. There was a lot of concern about accessory dwelling units. For three months, we've been talking about accessory dwelling units in five of the neighborhoods in my ward, and there were a number of community meetings added. As soon as there was a discussion about it and people understood what the possibilities might or might not be, a lot of the concerns went away. In fact, we're having a community meeting about this in my ward tonight. I've had three months of discussion with five different neighborhoods, and we've been able to assuage a lot of concerns. And that process has gotten us to a much more amenable solution. I think Councilmember Bender would agree. I started out saying, no frickin' way to that. That's terrible. My constituents are going to hate it. And with a lot of education, they really don't hate it that much. They didn't know enough about it to know what they disliked and liked. And this is the same exact situation. All we need to do is allow the 15 that we allowed before, that would cover the rest of the season, spend a couple of months going to the neighborhoods that have community gardens in R1, 2, and 3 districts, and say, what do you think of this? And I bet a lot of people will say, I'd rather not have tomatoes rotting on the ground, and I'd rather have people eating them. And then in January, February, March, we can make the change to a larger number of days, knowing that people who are affected by this would care and were consulted. And what I don't agree on is, we were elected, we know what's best, we don't need to ask anyone their permission. That's the piece I object to. If this was holding up something, that would be one thing. But this has been billed by whoever, staff, advocates, as though if you don't support selling things in a residential neighborhood 75 days a year, you're against zucchini. And I have received really hateful, nasty phone calls and emails about this. And so it tells me there's some misinformation out there, and it can be easily resolved through better communication. And I would hope that those working on these amendments seriously consider my request, because in the end, you might end up with the full 75 days, when you find out that people don't really mind when they understand what's going on.
Thank you, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to say, shame on any advocates that vilify our council members for looking out for their constituents and raising concerns. I don't think that that's appropriate. Certainly, people can put out their support, and I think it's helpful to hear from people, their perspectives on things, but I don't think we should be vilifying our council members regarding their positions or asking questions on this. Second off, I want to be clear on what this is. Because of the state constitution, we can't, from my understanding, put restrictions on people selling produce. So that can happen. We're talking about the actual farmstands, the actual structures. Do we want to allow a structure on a person's property to sell their produce? Third, I wanted to mention the process piece. My understanding is that this was noticed, like our other changes, that our neighborhood associations received notice of this, like our other changes, that there was a public hearing, like our other changes, that this has gone through essentially the same process that most of our changes go through. Certainly, with some very large changes, I think we see folks going above and beyond to make sure that there is just really a very substantial additional level of input based on the potential impact of a change. I know accessory dwelling units, that's one of those that we've seen a lot of community engagement around, because, for instance, our homeowners that are selling are going to feel pressured by their real estate agents to suddenly build on this accessory dwelling unit. And suddenly, we're seeing that pressure of, oh, you can get more money when you sell, driving this without an actual need in our city for it. So I think those kind of questions get addressed when we have that above and beyond additional public engagement. But when it comes to this particular change, putting it in perspective, from my understanding, there's been only two requests for farmstands in the entire city. Certainly, with this change, maybe in 10 years, there's 200 stands out there. But when it comes to a residential lot that's in between, let's say, two homes, that's only one regular lot, I don't anticipate that we will have farmstands up there for 75 days out of the year, because you simply can't grow enough tomatoes on that lot. And you don't have the resources to extend and buy so many lots and consolidate and bring them all to that location that would make that feasible. Where I see the additional use of these days would especially be big community gardens, such as Dowling Community Garden in my ward, which is on several blocks and has a lot of produce being grown. So putting that all in perspective, I'm comfortable with the process where it's been personally, I obviously respect and appreciate the interests of colleagues who are looking for additional engagement as well around this. And I think, all in all, most of us, if not all of us, are supportive of urban agriculture in general and better food options in our city. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender, and then I've put myself in queue since this is a big conversation now. I'll be next. Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also wanted to address some of the process concerns, and Councilmember Johnson mentioned some of these things, but I just wanted to make sure everyone knows that the, all of the neighborhood organizations in the city received notification of the Planning Commission hearing about this item, which occurred on August 11th. If I recall correctly, three people spoke, all in favor of the ordinance. So I know that, you know, sometimes it can be hard to keep track of everything that's happening, and that the fact that the hearings are decoupled, that all of our zoning changes go through the Planning Commission. I'll commit to doing a better job of communicating as committee chair, that, so make sure that everybody knows when things are happening, that things are coming up on our, through that process. So I apologize if I could have done a better job with that. But I did want to make sure everyone knew that the normal official process that we follow for community engagement around citywide policy changes was followed in this ordinance change. You know, in my time here, I've seen a lot of different levels of engagement about, about policy changes that we make. I've seen some go through with one community meeting, like the 1 to 4's zoning text amendments that we made earlier. We had one citywide opportunity for folks to comment before the hearing downtown. I've seen an expectation for the ADUs, for example, that we have many meetings in the community. So I just think some of those questions might be bigger policy questions about how we expect to do community engagement around citywide policy changes. And I'm committed to talking with my colleagues about how we can do the best job possible to make sure our constituents are all able to engage in these important discussions. On the substance of the ordinance, I just wanted to voice why I am supportive. This is something I've heard about a lot from my constituents, and I have, I don't have a lot of these in my ward. I do have one plot for Stones Throw Community Garden. They do a community-supported agriculture, a CSA share. And I just wanted to offer as an anecdote, the way I understand that they would like to use this ordinance change is to, when people come to their sites to pick up their CSA boxes, they would like to be able to sell some of the extra produce that they are growing as it becomes available throughout the year. And part of the limitation of our current ordinance is that it not only restricts the number of days to very few, but also requires people to say which days they're going to sell in the future specifically, which is very difficult for gardens to predict when their cucumbers will be available or their tomatoes. And so I'm really supportive of making sure that we're able to support farmers. This is not a very lucrative, I would say, you know, enterprise, but I think it's something that the people I know who are growing food in the city do it because they love it, because they're committed to providing fresh, healthy foods in our communities. I know a lot of folks in my ward love to see the community gardens outside of, within their neighborhoods, and would love to be able to walk home from the bus stop, pick up a little bit of produce for dinner, and go on their way. And so I'm supportive of the changes that Councilmember Gordon had proposed, and just wanted to voice why. Thank you.
All right. I just have a question. This is probably for the author, and I apologize. It's a little bit of my ignorance in just making sure I'm understanding the change that's at issue. And again, thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Sometimes one person opening the door of the conversation, you know, starts the dialogue. So I think you definitely did that. Thank you. And I, again, I apologize. I'm a little bit maybe behind. I was out of town last week in fully understanding the change. But I know there's this constitutional issue of not prohibiting, I don't know what you say, farmers, growers from selling their produce, and, or you can't require a permit or license or something they have to pay for. And I'm just trying to understand, because I think I had not quite understood the difference between what they can do today per the Constitution and what the change would involve. So today, you know, like they can, you know, put out a bunch of pumpkins, I guess, on the property they own and stand out there, and they can sell those pumpkins. But if they want to use a card table, is that then a farmstand? I'm just, I'm sorry to ask such maybe a stupid question, but I'm trying to understand the difference between what today someone can do at this community garden, and then what the change would actually involve.
I think that you're pretty accurate. I think that, Council Vice President, I think because of the unconstitutionality of it, we, it's very difficult for us to say you can't sell your produce anywhere in the city. So I think we couldn't require a permit, we couldn't require a fee, and in fact, we probably can't say you can't sell that, because they'd say, well, I'm just selling my apples or something. But what we are trying to do is regulate the farmstand and the other accessories that go with it, including advertising. So there's talk about when you can have a sign up, how big the sign could be, when you can have your stand up, which could be your card table, and that, and limiting that. I think right now, at a community garden, if somebody wanted to sell the food, we wouldn't do anything because we found out our ordinance was unconstitutional. So for the last two years, they've been able to sell this food. If they put up a sign and did other things, we would, we would go in and tell them, you can't have a sign here on your lot, or if it was prohibited according to our community garden rules. Now, you can have some signage now anyway. But, so that's, I think that's the difference. So I think that Councilmember Johnson was right in saying that we actually can't, and haven't been prohibiting the sales of food at these places. But now, we're going to be able to respond to a few of the growers who are asking to have more, and asking to have a sign, and asking to have a table. And Stones Throw is one that wanted to do that. They already are actually operating a CSA out of their garden, and that's perfectly legal and legitimate.
One more teeny question here. Again, I apologize. This is like in the weeds, probably more than anybody cares. But, so is there a definition of what is a farmstand? I mean, so do we know that if you use the, so use the card table example, that when you do that, then you're in the vicinity of that's, that's a farmstand, or?
Yeah, I was going to try to look up the definition of a farmstand.
I can ask this offline. I just thought maybe you knew.
I can get you more information later, too.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then Councilmember Gordon is in queue, and then Councilmember, Council President Johnson, and then Councilmember Yang.
I just wanted to admit that, given the discussion and what happened at the committee, I have been kicking myself, thinking, oh, I could have done more community engagement with this. I certainly noticed it in my newsletters, like I do other things that come up, that I think that my neighborhoods will want to hear about, like the 60-40 change that we're doing with the food ratio and alcohol. And I'm trying to make sure everybody hears about these things and knows about them, and has an opportunity to weigh in. I do know that because it was a zoning change and was going to the Planning Commission, that all the neighborhoods got their regular notice. But it takes your diehards to really figure out what are they going to respond to and what aren't they, and it's different. You know, I'll note that for conservation districts, for commercial recycling, I mean, I went around with a one-pager and offered to meet with all business associations, or in one case, in neighborhood groups with another. And I'd still be happy to help do that, no matter what the outcome of this is, to see if it requires some modifications in the future.
All right, Councilmember Johnson, no longer. Okay, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Since we're using speaker management, I wanted to give my colleague the privilege of using my time. And so if I may, without the rules being too stringent, I'd like to yield my time to Councilmember Goodman.
Right. And we are in committee, and when we're in committee, you can get in queue as many times as you like.
It doesn't allow it.
Oh, it doesn't allow it in speaker management, I see.
No, and I turned on my thing the first time to ask if we were discussing it.
Okay.
I want to speak to this regular notice. So in my ward, there are no staff people in most of these neighborhoods. So what they get is a P.O. box with a letter that says there's going to be these changes. And then it has a whole list of changes. And there isn't any objection to eliminating the fees. There's no objection to actually operating these farmsteads in commercial areas, including every zoning district we have, except for R1, 2, and 3. So downtown, I have an Elliott Park Community Garden. It's in an OR 3 and R6 area. They're used to commercial activity. I have no problem with that. My concern is where it's simply R1 and R2 and R3, really limited zoning, having a commercial activity. And when you get something in the mail from the city saying, we're going to have these changes, come to the Planning Commission, most of these people, it's one person who picks up the information. They don't read through every one of the changes. I didn't even know the change, and I'm sure Councilmember Reich will be kicking himself. I didn't even realize it until he brought an amendment that said to increase the hours from seven at night till dusk and dawn, which I support, that I also saw it struck out 15 and added 75. That's how I found out about it. No one talked to me about this in advance, and I read pretty much everything I get in front of me. So I don't know how neighborhoods could legitimately be expected to understand the difference between 15 days of commercial operation in a residential neighborhood versus 75 days of commercial operation in a neighborhood. And it's not all neighborhoods, because neighborhoods that already are mixed-use and have a good dose of commercial would have no objection to this. So I don't think the notice was adequate, given the complexity and the change of the use within a specific zoning district, although I acknowledge that it's the same process we always go through. I've pointed out, I don't think that same process was workable here. And all I'm asking for is to give them some, those groups, some time and feedback to be able to deal with this. I have no objection to the 15 days. I obviously don't want to pay a fee. I moved to strike the word "community garden" because I felt that was more residentially focused in an R1 or 2 or 3, whereas I felt market gardens and the kind of gardens Councilmember Bender speaks to, and the farmer's market in Minneapolis are already in commercial areas, having commercial operations. So I just wanted to clarify those things.
Okay. I think I'm not seeing anyone else who has a question or contribution to the discussion. Just checking. And with that, I'd like, totally misplaced my agenda, but let me just double-check. There is no special announcement, and I believe we are done with our agenda for the day. I'm seeing some nods. Thank you very much to the clerk, and thank you to my colleagues for your patience during a substantial meeting. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.